Good evening. I'd now like to call to order the November 8, 2021 work session of the York County School Board. We are moving closer to the holiday season and we only have 17 days left before Thanksgiving. This is a time of year to reflect on how much we have to be thankful for and to share with others around us. We will always have opportunities to donate canned goods, clothing, and coats as a way to help others in our community who may not be as fortunate. As we look back over the past year and a half, we can all think of the many challenges we've encountered and overcome as individuals and as a school division. The good news is that in the face of various obstacles, we've continued to move forward, remain steadfast in our priorities and commitment to excellence. I think we can agree that each of us have much to be grateful for. To start our presentations, we have an operational update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and good evening, board members. We have six presentations for you this evening. We're going to start off with what has been sort of a tradition here for the last, I guess, year and a half, and Dr. Carroll is going to kick us off with an operational update. Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, season's greetings. And thank you, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board. So here is your update. So a lot of this will be a familiar territory to you, and we see that our locality statistics continue to trend down and looking better. We do remain below the state average. We continue to see a drop on this back end of the wave. Last week, we fell, for the first time this school year, below the CDC-defined threshold of a high community transmission. So we've spent the entire month so far in substantial zone. So today, we currently stood at 88.2 cases per 100,000, so that is an improvement. And consistent with that has been our own cases, and the fall in community transmission has also been mirrored with us. Two weeks ago, I reported to you that we had started that Monday, two weeks before that, half the positives as two weeks before, and now I can tell you that we're a third of where we were two weeks ago. So we're starting to see some big drops there. Today, we started the day at only six positive cases, you know, before our typical Monday bounce, but each of these Mondays has been getting lower and lower, so it's less problematic. So we continue to improve with positive cases. And also with our quarantines, we saw a corresponding fall in both since our last two meetings. Today, we were at 21, and so when you combine that with the six positive cases, we are under 30 for the first time, which is about 10 times less than what we were seeing at the beginning of the school year. So this is certainly encouraging. We also continue to see, you know, incremental changes in the percent of vaccination with the students that are in our schools. Of course, this is all of the students that are at these ages, but definitely reflective of what we're seeing. So our 12- to 15-year-olds in York County have 55.1% of them have been vaccinated and 46.3% are fully vaccinated. And when it comes to 16- and 17-year-olds, we're now at 63.1% for first doses and 54.1% fully vaccinated. And we continue to see rise in all of the adults in our community. We have a 1% jump since the last meeting, so we're at 73.6 on their first and 67% are fully vaccinated. We also have vaccination and testing news. You know that the vaccinations have been approved for elementary-age students now, and we will partner with a local pharmacy to provide a central clinic side on November 19th, and that can provide shots of all kinds for the COVID vaccine. Information will follow over the next two days about specifics there. Secondly, we are going to start a diagnostic testing service for our staff members, starting next Monday. Now, that will only apply to those staff members who are experiencing symptoms or have been ruled a close contact, and so they will be able to get a rapid test from one of our nurses, and there's a state program to support that. And so we'll be able to start that a week from today. And also, we still have no official guidance from the state on mandatory vaccinations for our educational staff. Also want to give you a transportation update. We do remain significantly understaffed. However, this is the best prognosis we've had to date. We added two drivers since we last met, and we still have four new hires in the hiring training pipeline. So we continue to improve, and schools and families should now start to be seeing some improvements across all zones. And it's just something that our department keeps working on. And then also, since our last meeting, you'll remember that you authorized the superintendent to make changes in the school calendar to assist staff in planning time. That's been hindered by in-building coverages. And this upcoming November 11th, you know, the superintendent has already announced these to our staff and community, that we will have an early release date on Thursday. From, it went from early release to a full-day student holiday, and then on December 6, it's going from a full day to a student early release day. So those are the changes that we've put into place. Now, if we do consider any other calendar changes, it's important to recognize the constraints that we're working under. State has some requirements, and the first of them being that there is a commitment to in-person learning, and we all heeded that call, and it's by law that we make that commitment and have students in every day. Now, one of the other requirements is what does a year mean? A year means 180 days or 990 hours of instruction, and I know you've heard a lot of that since last year. And then 140 hours are required for high school credit-bearing courses and 560 hours when you group all of the middle school core classes together. So that's something we still have to meet. Now, there is a provision for unscheduled remote learning days, and two areas are covered by that. The first one is that if there's impact from COVID-19, you work in collaboration with the health department in case you have to have some closures, and the state has allowed for 10 days for that if you are having to answer to a COVID emergency. And then the second one is weather and other emergencies. And of course, when you're having those types of situations, we do have to make sure that we have protections for equity for all students if it severely limits our functionality. So things like making sure that all students have electricity, making sure all students have internet accessibility and computers, and there's a list of eight things there, but we have to make sure all of those are in place before we can say we're going to have a remote learning day due to weather or another different emergency. So that wraps up my report, and I welcome any questions that you may have.
Just going back to the diagnostic testing for staff, I know we used to say that if they've got symptoms, they should stay home, so what happens if they're staying home and they would like to get that rapid test?
Well, I'm sure we can make arrangements for the nurse to come out to the car or something.
Okay. Thank you.
For that testing, we're not testing, I'm sorry, the partnering with the vaccination for the 19th, that's a Friday, would that take place after school hours? And then what's the process for parents who would want to take advantage of that? Is there going to be a sign-up and advance process or paperwork to be done?
Yes, so this will be similar to other clinics that we've done. First of all, it will be after school, and we're working out the exact times right now and making sure that we have enough people to, personnel to actually give the shot. And there will be an advanced sign-up, and the directions for that will be in the communications we put out in the next couple of days.
All right, so it won't be during school at all, so parents have to be there with the child while they're being vaccinated?
Well, they have to be anyway. That's one of the reasons why we didn't do it during the school day, was because you have to bring the parents in, and we didn't want to also interrupt academic time.
Okay, thank you.
So, Dr. Carroll, there's been some, I've had a few emails from parent or teacher, I'm not sure who it was, about maybe taking the whole week of Thanksgiving off, which would be an additional two extra days, and I understand why, and I responded back to that parent that, you know, we have certain hours to meet, but also indicated too that there may be days that we have off that they don't have off, and that's why they were able to manipulate their calendar. And this individual did email back and said, yeah, I checked the calendar with somebody else, and that's the case, we have other days off. So I guess that's true with the calendar committee meets, and there's some days that we take off that they don't take off, and it doesn't always correspond because we have to meet that requirement of hours, correct?
Right, we have a calendar committee, a regional calendar committee that, you know, agrees to some non-negotiables, things that you're going to commit to, so that we can make that regional calendar work. But on top of that, the school systems do different things, and so, and some of them have longer years than us technically. You know, it's 180 days or 990 hours. Some have additional days, and if you have additional days, then you can give some of those away and get yourself into a tighter situation. So we can't answer for the other school divisions and how they handle their calendar because they may have built it differently. And they're also, everybody's all over the map in how they've addressed some of the issue with the, you know, relieving pressures on teachers. But I do know that a number of divisions, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, WJCC, Pecos and Gloucester, all have addressed things similarly to the way we have.
Okay, I just think we needed to at least explain that, clarify that. And I know during Christmas, we've been trying to do the two-week break for Christmas, and I know some divisions still don't have that two-week break. They're doing a week and a half. So it's all in comparison, it all works out in the long run.
So some of it's dependent on choices we've already made?
Right.
Correct, and some divisions haven't had Wednesdays off, and we've had the Wednesday before Thanksgiving off in the past several years. So some of them have made an adjustment this year to at least have, you know, the Wednesday off or potential half-day on that Wednesday because they hadn't done that previously.
So families can travel to go out of town. Yeah, perfect, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Do we still have any flexibility in the schedule to account for snow days and for teacher workdays like we just did?
Yes, with our instructional hours, we always have some buffer, but we haven't gone through any of that weather period yet, so we're still, you know, we want to be deliberate about that and careful because we don't want to paint ourselves into a corner where we then have to extend the school year.
We're going Saturdays.
Any other questions for Dr. Carroll? Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Dr. Carroll. Our next presentation is a strategic plan update for Goal 2, Objective 2.9, Special Education Program update. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Again, board members, Dr. Langold is here, Director of Student Services. She's going to provide us an update on objective under Goal 2 of the strategic plan, and you will remember this is relating to the program evaluation of the division's current service delivery model for students with disabilities. Dr. Gold.
Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will provide you with an update on strategic plan goal number 2, objective
Ms. Ford, can you help us with the presentation?
It's right there, the second one. Got it.
Right here. Just, Ms. Ford, for the record, I help with technology.
In October of 2019, if you'll remember, Gibson Consulting completed a special education program evaluation of YCSD's service delivery model for students with disabilities. The evaluation team got feedback from stakeholders across the division and identified opportunities for improving our student, special education programs and services. On this chart, you will see a review of the actions that have been completed since the last update that I provided to you. The special education program improvement team includes a cross-section of stakeholders in the division, including parents. The team engaged in a TRAgoEd situation analysis to review the findings of the evaluation, to identify some of the most important issues, and prioritize some of those actions during the school year and for the summer. After the update to the school board tonight, I will also share this information with our local special education advisory committee, or SEAC, at our November meeting. I'm sorry, our December meeting. The program evaluation report included 21 recommendations in the three categories that you see there on this slide. Tonight, I will update you on the recommendations and actions completed, as well as the next steps in each category. This slide shows the evaluation committee's recommendations in the area of organization and management, on which the Office of Student Services has been working this past year. During the FY22 budget process, our team evaluated caseload targets for some related service providers to ensure that we had optimal staffing efficiency and effectiveness. As a result of a thorough data analysis, it was determined that we needed one additional occupational therapist, and that occupational therapist position is currently being filled by a contracted service provider. She's doing a great job. Recommendations in the last row are directly related to one another, and that's why they're in the same cell. So Student Services works closely with IT and instructional staff members to create systems in Power BI, in Aspen, and in Virginia IEP to ensure that we continuously monitor our data for progress and accuracy, so that it's available for us to provide accurate reports when required. Also, in the area of organization and management, the priorities are identified here on this slide. In order to improve our school-level staffing efficiency, Student Services staff engage in regular visits to our schools to support student and staff needs, and they do that through ongoing professional learning, through coaching, and IEP review. This allows our IEP teams to focus on using staff effectively based on our documented student needs. During the visits, Student Services coordinators direct school staff to the special education handbook and to the guidance documents that have been developed. By using these resources, we ensure that we have consistent implementation of our division policies, standard operating procedures, and all those relevant state and federal regulations. Our special education handbook is updated at least annually to provide the most up-to-date requirements of programmatic changes, and training is provided to our staff, to our administrators and teachers. In addition to the special education handbook, we've also developed separate guidance documents when appropriate, and this year, we've developed one to support our school staff related to students in our out-of-division placements. There have been new regulations implemented that will go into effect next year, as well as supporting our schools for any students accessing virtual learning this year. With the addition of three newly budgeted behavioral positions, we have a unique opportunity to expand our behavioral services for students and increase specialized services and supervision for staff in the area of applied behavior analysis, functional behavioral assessment, behavior intervention plans, and also more sophisticated methods to support our students with more intensive behavior and communication support needs. We will also continue to provide the Evidence-Based Practices Academy to our preschool through 12th-grade general and special education teachers and related service providers this year, and this professional development also includes implementation support through our division-wide coaching model. On the next two slides, you will see the update on the actions taken to implement the recommendations in the area of program implementation. You'll see some items are checked and some are bulleted. The ones that are checked have been completed, and we continue to work on those bulleted items. In the spring of 2021, a response to intervention committee engaged in a TRAgoEd situation analysis, and we began identifying the issues surrounding our current RTI process and procedures. Key issues brought forth by the team included universal screening, interventions for reading and math, division-wide implementation of RTI consistently, and identifying RTI team members' roles and responsibilities. Moving forward, Christina Head, the Associate Director of K-12 Academic Services, will continue the work with the committee to develop goals and action steps. During the spring and summer of 2021, Student Services completed audits on 125 IEPs using an IEP checklist that we developed in-house, also using some of the items recommended through Gibson. We use that checklist to gather data to support our professional development needs for staff around IEP development, and as we continue to provide training, we'll continue to use that checklist to see how we're doing as it relates to the professional development. Continuing in the area of program implementation, Gibson recommended that we increase professional development and guidance to IEP teams. In August of 2021, Student Services staff and the Sands Anderson Law Firm engaged our relevant staff in professional development around IEP development, the Student Services Handbook, as well as YCSD's special programs for students with more intensive support needs. We are also supporting our new special education teachers through the New Teacher Academy, which is a year-long support system for our new teachers. During the pandemic, it was important for the school division to consider the mental wellness of our students in the area of academics and behavior. So in the summer of 2020, we formed an SEL committee and explored the needs around social, emotional, and learning in the division. The committee informed the work of the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Division-wide team to increase administrative teacher and mental health professional capacity to support social, emotional, and learning through positive behavioral interventions and support. More intensive support was provided as appropriate at the Tier 2 and 3 level. On this slide, you will see next steps in the area of program implementation. You'll see in the beginning, secondary transition IEPs are required for our students who turn 14 during the cycle of their current IEP. And secondary transition planning is an area that we found teachers needed more support around through using the IEP checklist in those audits. And so training will include developing meaningful post-secondary goals, using a more extensive transition assessment process, and creating transition activities to support students to reach their goals. Student Services staff will also continue to provide ongoing training to all stakeholders engaged in the student placement process and to ensure that all of that professional development aligns to the special education handbook. We will also assess the current continuum of programs and services to ensure that instruction is provided according to each student's instructional level through co-teaching and specially-designed instruction. Lastly, in the area of social, emotional learning, the Virginia Department of Education has recently released to school divisions the state's social, emotional learning standards. The SEL committee, including family members, will reconvene to review VDOE SEL standards and resources and select those that will be presented to the board for approval. This work will also be accomplished through the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Division Leadership Team. Lastly, in the area of parent insights and satisfaction, we will continue to implement the two recommendations that were included in the program evaluation report. We'll do that through continuing with our family newsletter, our SEAC meetings, and opportunities to share their feedback with the VDOE through the Medicaid and Servant of Families. Our transition coordinator will also continue with Transition Tuesdays, where families of children of all ages can learn about those critical decision points during the transition Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you tonight, and I will now welcome your comments and questions.
Thank you, Dr. Gold.
Just more of a clarification, I know I'm the board member that sits on the SEAC committee, but can you explain what the committee is, what the benefit would be of someone joining, and then the process for them to become a member of that?
Yes, thank you. So we have meetings at least four times a year. The Special Education Advisory Committee, their primary focus is to support the improvement of special education programs and services for students with disabilities, so to make recommendations to the board, which they do annually. It's also an opportunity for people to learn. So the SEAC chairperson, we work together on an agenda, but she primarily comes up with the presentations that will be given at night. She can get someone from outside to come in, or she can get one of us in the Office of Student Services to present on a topic that is of interest to the families. If someone wants to become a member of SEAC, they can go onto the school board website. Under special education, there's a parents section under there, I'm sorry, under parents, there's a special education section there, and they can access the board application there. Once that's submitted, we will gather several applications and then submit those to the board for approval.
And you do not have to be a member to attend those meetings?
You do not. The meetings are always open to the public, and we welcome anyone to come. Those meetings will be held all in person this year, and we are meeting at the school board office, and the actual schedule of dates is up on the school board website as well. We typically post the agenda ahead of the meeting so folks can see what's on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Gold.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Strategic Plan Update for Goal 4, Objective 4.4, on student behavior. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We're going to give Dr. Butler and Dr. Hartley just a second to get settled in. So our first presentation is on Goal 4, Objective 4.4, Behavior Referrals. Dr. Butler, who's our Director of School Administration, is going to share how their department has provided professional development, attended state national trainings, utilized software programs designed to support data analysis, and collaborated with building administrators and staff to revise and implement programs, procedures, and protocols to reduce behavior referrals and out-of-school suspensions.
Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to present an update on Strategic Plan Goal 4, School Culture, Specifically Student Behavior. Objective 4 involves the implementation of programs and protocols to reduce discipline referrals and out-of-school suspensions with a focus on exclusionary practices and disproportionality. Over the past four years for this update, I have presented a summary of our division's VDOE-reported discipline data, along with an overview of the different programs and strategies implemented to address this goal. Due to the unique nature of learning modalities used during the 2020-2021 school year and the recent changes to how VDOE collects and reports discipline data, the presentation this evening will focus on the explanation of the new VDOE discipline data collection system, the revised state standards of student behavior, and the programs and protocols implemented last school year to foster a positive and safe learning environment. Since 1994, the Virginia Department of Education has used the Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report as a uniform method to collect data concerning student discipline and meet federal reporting standards. A revision was made in 2004 to embed emerging research related to student conduct and interventions. In addition, school divisions were required to report any discipline incident that resulted in half to a full-day event-school suspension and all out-of-school suspensions and exclusions. In 2019, the Virginia Department of Education made a major revision to the Virginia Standards of Student Conduct. The Discipline, Crime, and Violence Report was discontinued following the 2020-2021 school year, and in new framework, the Student Behavior and Administrative Response System, referred to as SBAR, was adopted to collect required federal data regarding out-of-school and in-school suspensions. The new standards also require divisions to track, monitor, and submit the types of interventions used to address student behaviors, including academic, behavior-based modifications, and punitive consequences. With the change in how discipline data is now reported to VDOE, our division data collected last year is not consistent with the methodology being currently used. This year's data will serve as a new baseline and will be reported to the board as part of the annual updates this time next school year. Our division's Strategic Plan Goal 4 already aligned with several core components of the 2019 revised standards related to reducing out-of-school suspensions and exclusionary practices. Similar to the Strategic Plan Goal, the new behavior standards take a scientific and behavioral approach to discipline with a focus on balancing student consequences with teaching replacement strategies in order to help students improve their behavior, resulting in the development of good citizenship and appropriate workplace skills. This evening, I would like to highlight three interventions and systems used by division staff to ensure safe and disruption-free learning environments and provide assistance to students with behavior-based and/or peer relationship challenges. The division is currently in year four of implementing the Virginia Tiered Systems of Support Support's framework. Through grant funding and participation in the VDOE program, our division receives support services from two external coaches, Chris Curtis, who is affiliated with the Virginia Commonwealth University Research Center, and Daria Loria Barston, who is affiliated with the Training and Technical Assistance Center, T-TAC, at the College of William and Mary. During the 2020-21 school year, the pandemic necessitated that we changed focus and delivery methods related to school-based supports and training. Last school year, with students learning both in-person and remotely, school Positive Behavior Intervention System, or PBIS, teams developed learning expectation matrices to support students in whatever learning environment they were placed. Schools also reinforced behavior expectations for student interaction during asynchronous learning days and while they used the Canvas learning platform. You can see here an example of how TAB Middle School, they took their virtual learning, they took their regular PBIS matrix and turned it into something for synchronous days, asynchronous, and then even on the Wednesday support days last school year, how students were to still remain respectful, orderly, achievement-oriented, and responsible. Schools developed acknowledgement systems to recognize students for setting good examples of citizenship while making various efforts to connect with families during remote and hybrid learning experiences. We see here at the top image, you'll see from York Middle School, their acronym is SOARING. And so if students or staff saw people who were SOARING or setting a good example for being a York Middle School Falcon, they could use the QR reader code and they could submit that, and they would receive recognition. You also see at the bottom two pictures how we also welcome students back to a positive environment at McGruder and how they made home visits in the TAB zone, but that was also done in all of our zones to connect with families and students. Through Target Four and VTSS grant funding, all schools were given stipend positions to support students with attendance, academic, and/or engagement to school. During the pandemic, staff used a check-and-connect monitoring system and student success plans to track student achievement and behavioral progress, all monitoring performance, and providing targeted interventions as supportive measures for students. School counselors and homeroom teachers reinforced positive school environments through character education lessons, anti-bullying activities, and participation in virtual events. As you see, the kind of challenge that was done here at TAB Middle School, where students, again, would use a QR code reader, and then they could, of course, acknowledge how they were showing kindness as part of that week's activity. They also engaged in virtual events such as the Virtual Unity Day last year, which is a day set aside to promote safe, positive, and welcoming school environments. In reviewing current discipline data, schools have reported the emergence of several challenging student behaviors this school year. To support students, we have several professional development sessions on Tier One and Tier Two Behavior Intervention Systems, training on how to maximize Power BI and Aspen data systems to integrate targeted behavior interventions. We are also using systems to track student connectivity to school and help school-based PBIS teams focus on reteaching and modeling positive social interactions and school norms and expectations. Thank you for this opportunity to present updates on Goal Four, Objective Four. I'm now available for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
I have a quick question. Now, with students sort of back in the building, there's going to be instances where timeouts are needed. Do we have training or practices in place for restorative practices when students come back after a suspension or in-school suspension to rebuild some of those relationships that might have been strained?
And the new standards, and that was one of the things that we implemented in the new student handbook for this year, is required that whenever a student has been excluded from school through a suspension or even in-school suspension, there should be a reentry meeting. And that's where we bring together the team approach of having the administrator and sometimes the counselor, the parent, and the student to talk about what were the factors that caused the exclusion or suspension, and then what are some things we can do to support the child so they can reintegrate back into the class.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
Our next presentation is Strategic Plan Update for Goal Five, Objective 5.6 for Safety and Security. Dr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Our Associate Director of School Administration and Compliance, Dr. Hartley, is here this evening, and he's going to give you a presentation on safety and security and how our departments collaborated with the community and division resources to ensure a safe, secure educational environment. Dr. Hartley?
Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight, I will address Strategic Plan Goal Five, Safety and Security. Under Goal Five, I will update you on our procedures that support safe and secure educational The Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety oversees school safety in the state of Virginia, and that's K-12 and college campuses. They do this primarily by facilitating what is called the School Safety Audit, and this is a tool to assist schools in evaluating their safety efforts. If you'll take a look at the infographic to the right side of your screen, these are the four major components of the School Safety Audit, and we are required to conduct these and certify those with DCJS and the Virginia Center for School and Campus Safety. One that I'd like to focus on is the Secondary School Climate Survey. This provides school administrators with student perceptions of bullying, teasing, harassment, and school safety. This allows school administrators to make adjustments to their school safety plans and their crisis plans. Keep in mind that when we talk about school safety, this is anything from lockdowns to severe weather. The training provided by the VCSCS is invaluable, it's at no cost, and it is ongoing and consistent based on current trends and patterns across the state and nation in regards to safety.
That was actually a test for Ms. Goff to see if she could respond. Thank you, Ms. Goff. Dr. Hartley?
We planned it that way.
She's trying to die.
So as Dr. Butler mentioned earlier, and I will also, last school year, the impacts of COVID-19 across the state presented schools with many different schedules, a lot of virtual environment to begin the school year, hybrid, students coming in at different stages throughout the school year. So this had a major impact on conducting safety drills. Therefore, the Superintendent of Public Instruction provided a waiver to delay or not to conduct tornado drills, bus evacuation drills, and lockdown drills. It did not apply to fire safety. However, YCSD saw safety as a top priority, and we continued our standard drill schedule. So I would like to say to the board and Dr. Shandor, hats off to our school administrators, because in order to do so, this meant that administrators had to plan and conduct twice the number of drills that they normally would so that Cohorts One and Cohort Two were able to practice safety. So that was a big task, but we decided we wanted to do it, and we stuck with the schedule throughout the school year. The following are some safety measures that I'm sure board members have seen at community and visitors to buildings. And I'd like to point, I'd like to talk about two in particular. The first one is the 800 megahertz radio. We have multiple radios at each school and at the School Board office, and the benefit is they communicate directly with 911, other schools in the division, and the School Board office, so we can get that direct help with the 800 megahertz radio. The other is the Access Control System, known as the Aphone, and that directs visitors to the main office. So people might try to enter the building at other areas, and they will push that Aphone, and they will be directed to come to the main office. And then, secondly, it provides or controls building access. We have an outstanding partnership with the York Picuson Sheriff's Office and the Fire and Life Safety Department. We work hand-in-hand on planning school safety, conducting drills, and training for schools, staff, and students. Another feature I would like to point out is the Quick Reference Safety Guide. If you've ever been in a situation, a crisis situation, you have to be able to react and respond quickly. The adrenaline is moving, and so in every classroom and every staff member has what is called a Quick Reference Safety Guide, and that's just a bulleted list of quick-action items for a particular crisis. When it comes to safety, there are multiple avenues of communication between schools and families. One that I'd like to focus on this evening is the last bullet, and that's called the Report It. And this is used for concerns about student or school safety. As you can see from the infographic there in the middle, if you're at school or if you're at a school-sponsored event, extracurricular activity, and there is a concern, the first thing to do is tell a trusted adult or communicate with a trusted adult. We also have the hotline phone number. They report it, you can report it on the app, and we also note on that infographic that if it is an emergency, or if it's the weekend or after-school hours, and you feel like it's imminent, pick up the phone and call 911, and York Picuson Sheriff's Office will communicate with school officials. And finally, those reports are confidential. When it comes to safety, our focus is on being proactive. So when there is threatening comments, messages, and behaviors, we go to a team approach to prevent the dangerous behavior, assess the level of the threat, determine a course of action based on that level of threat, and communicate important information to the During the 2021 school year, select staff participated in digital threat assessment training provided by DCJS. So I mentioned earlier, along with Dr. Butler, that we had that shift to the virtual environment and the hybrid environment. So threats that may be typical in a traditional school setting had shifted to the online, and we just needed to pivot a little bit and get some training on how to handle those type of situations. All 19 of our schools completed the School Safety Audit, and once they did that, the Division Safety Audit Committee reviewed all school safety audits and made recommendations and the necessary modifications or corrections. And finally, there's a mandatory school safety presentation as provided to all staff, so we do this annually as a refresher to returning staff, but also for initial training for those staff that are new to the division. Our next steps, the executive leadership team has begun crisis management tabletop exercises with the York Picuson Sheriff's Office. Mr. Myatt has joined us for Phase One of the training, and he may have some comments to share upon the conclusion of my presentation, so I look forward to that. School-based administrator training will follow, and DCJS will continue to provide additional training to school threat assessment teams. So they are consistently looking at patterns and trends across the state and the nation, and as soon as they see something, they offer timely and immediate training. It's free, it could be in person, it could be through Zoom, so the training is, once again, as I mentioned earlier, invaluable in working with DCJS. So thank you for the opportunity to share updates concerning safety and security in our division, and I am now available for questions or comments.
Thank you, Dr. Hartley.
Yes, I did get the opportunity to attend the first phase, three phases of training. I made mention of it during the previous meeting, but it was superb. Training was presented by the York Picuson Sheriff's Office, Community Affairs Division, but more importantly, was attended by over 20 members of the division staff representing multiple functional areas from ops and finance and safety and instruction. And what I found most important, again, was everybody has good experience with regard to incident response and crisis management. We have a seasoned professional team, and I was very impressed as we broke out into our small groups that most everyone, particularly those from the operations side, have dealt with any number of events or incidents. So we've got seasoned, experienced teams, and as Dr. Hartley said, checklist available, but again, integrated with York Picuson and other county resources, so it was impressive training. We'll build, I've got my invite again for a second piece of training, and then we'll culminate with a tabletop exercise, which I'm looking very forward to, so hats off to the division.
Thank you.
With the inclusion of the digital threat assessment and then having the school threat assessment teams, what all personnel are included in those teams for the training?
So with the training that they offer, we share that with just about anybody that wants to take advantage of it. Sometimes it's geared towards a particular group, but usually it's sent to all school administrators, sometimes counselors, sometimes, I say "and/or," psychologists, social workers, and we also to the school resource officers and Captain Han and Sergeant Sharville that oversee the SRO program. So it's very widespread, and, you know, when DCJS provides the training, they give a description of the intended audience. That doesn't mean it's restricted to that particular audience, so Dr. Butler and I and Mrs. Parr will look at it, and we will disseminate it, we'll share it, we'll share the link, send it, and say, if you're interested, please sign up and let us know, so that way we have an idea of participating. Because sometimes we'll use those people when we do assistant principal or principal meetings to do a share-out or do at least a little mini-training of what they learned when they attended.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
And I'd just like to comment, the crisis management training that y'all did, we did it back with Carl James, Dr. James, and he was here and I was with the Sheriff's Department. So it's been going on for some time, too, but it's good that we have good seasoned people that are stepping up to those other roles, because a lot of people have left and stepped down and retired. And they get an opportunity to do that, too, to work together in EOC when we have hurricanes and different things like that, so it's very impressive when they get together.
Yeah, the integration is critical.
They do a very good job.
I think that's what Mr. Myatt will share when I mention in the presentation that crisis is, you know, anything from an event to an incident, so sometimes we start thinking of crisis as one thing, but really it could be a combination of things.
Good presentation, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Hartley.
Our next presentation is about a draft for our six-year facility master plan. Dr. Shannon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We're going to let Dr. Carroll and Mr. Sheerheart work their way up to their position, so these are your, I believe, these are your last presentations of the evening. So Dr. Carroll is going to begin with a draft of our facilities master plan, which is a six-year plan, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Carroll.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Good evening again, board. This evening, I'm pleased to share the proposed six-years facilities master plan. During this presentation, I will also share updated information about new residential development and school capacity. We have supplied each of you a hard copy of the report, and it will be uploaded to Board Docs tomorrow. Tonight, I will hit the highlights from the report. So when we talk about the facilities master plan, we're providing background and historical information about we're providing background and historical information about our facilities, like the fact that our average age is 51 years for our buildings. We'll present enrollment. We present enrollment and school capacity data. We address the facility needs and recommend projects for the capital improvement program, which is also known as the CIP, which will be finalized later in the year. Now, affecting this plan this year is the fact that we're looking at increased construction costs, given the state of the construction market and supply chain issues. Because of that, multiple projects have revised costs, mostly from a facility study that is still currently in the works, some from revised architectural estimates that we've received, and some of the projects in the out-years from reasonable increases estimated by our staff. I would also like to recognize the impact that COVID has had on our instructional delivery system last year. And due to the fact that we had to move to digital learning, we were able to cobble together a one-to-one computing platform for our students, which we're now tasked with sustaining. But the program was made possible by $2 million in county funds and other federal COVID relief funds. And what we had not contemplated in previous years was if all of our students had devices, we could cease funding a number of our computer labs. And that, of course, has an impact on our instructional capacity, especially in our elementaries. So I'll first start with new residential development. And to remind you, there are three stages of residential development with York County. There's active, pending, and planned. Now, active developments are those where construction's actually underway. Pending are those where there are site plans that have been submitted. And then the planned category are ones where there have been no site plans. Now, this year, I'm eliminating a feature from my presentation. We've received projections from county staff in the past on how many students they felt that each of these developments would yield. We found that those projections have been imprecise. Not anybody's fault, but that's a difficult science. And we've found that they have not helped us in our enrollment projections, and therefore, we're going to be removing those from the presentation. So first, I'll talk about just those projects that are in the active zone. If you want more information, you can refer to the entire report. But we'll talk about the active projects. And I'll give you the school zone, the housing development. The COs are the certificates of occupancy as of October 1, and then the future units. Future units is the biggest piece of information that we're concerned about, because developments or units that already have their CO are going to get sold in a very quick manner. And so when you combine the COs plus the future units, then you see the scope of the development. So with this first slide, you have Coventry, Dares, and Grafton-Bethel's, and you don't see a lot of impact on our schools there. Next, we move to McGruder, and you've got four developments that are impacting that. And about a quarter of them are left for future units. And those are in Carrington Meadows, Marquee Hills, Washington Ridge, and Whittaker's Mill. Mount Vernon has a lot of projects, but not a lot of future units, as you can see. And Seaford and Yorktown are seeing reasonable growth, but nothing that should increase impact on their school enrollments. And Waller Mill is another story. It has the most potential, and that is why you see that school on the proposed CIP, as well as Queens Lake for expansion. Here, I've listed the five developments with the most future units, and all others grouped together at the bottom. And this shows that the woods of Kings Creek with the most potential for impact. However, we have to also remember that recent Williamsburg development has not always impacted our school's enrollment to the level that we thought it would. So that's something that we're going to continue to monitor. So next, I'll move to capacity. And we'll start with high school and work our way to elementary. So at the high school level, the instructional capacity is the same as the building capacity, because we measure instructional capacity different at the secondary level. None of the high schools have enrollment greater than the building or instructional capacity. And the level-wide instructional capacity gap is about 1,000 students. Also, at the middle school level, the instructional capacity is the same as the building capacity. And none of the middle schools have an enrollment that is greater than their instructional capacity. And division-wide, we're looking at a gap of about 1,100 students. However, as mentioned earlier, the potential growth in Queens Lake cannot be discounted. And now, we'll move to elementary. In this FMP, we've returned to one elementary projection as opposed to the three that I presented to you last year, given the variance that we were getting with the COVID effect on our enrollment. This is the model we've historically used, and it assumes a static instructional capacity, which is unrealistic, but impossible to project. And we might have a situation where we have greater pressure from increased enrollment, but we're able to offset that with reductions in computer labs. But the bottom line for us right now is we're comfortable where we sit now. Of the five schools currently over capacity, they all have additional capacity not listed in this table in the form of portable classrooms. And Seaford is in line for renovation and addition. So just a reminder, when we talk about our capacity, we're talking about the brick-and-mortar capacity of the building. You'll see that this projection predicts only another 234 students over the next six years. However, these are based on a straight-line projection from this year's enrollment and should continue to see some variance as we recover from COVID-19. So I'll start to look at our capital improvement projects. Now, projects that are placed on the CIP are based on the fact that we need capital funds supplied by the county. And the order in which they are placed is dependent on a variety of factors. And those include instructional capacity, security concerns, age of the structure, building conditions, and cost. So I'll first start with our elementary projects. You'll also see some of the numbers in our table are in green. They denote cash projects. And there's going to be a few more in there than you're used to seeing. First of all, there, where you see Mount Vernon Elementary, we have an HVAC project there that's up to begin this year in order to use available federal funds. And so that's why we've moved that up. The Seaford renovation that was pushed back last year is now in motion, as you'll see from Mr. Shearheart's presentation later tonight. And you'll also notice that $2 million in funding is coming from the Revenue Stabilization Fund on the Seaford project to help meet escalating costs. The Dare and Waller Mill expansions are pushed back, and will be subject to monitoring of our enrollments, as we just discussed. So we'll move on to our middle school projects. We moved up the TAB Middle HVAC project. This is where you see the local matching dollars for the Mount Vernon project. We had to put up the same amount of dollars as we got from the federal grant. So we're moving both projects up so we can get them going and to match those funds. You also notice a cash investment of over $1.6 million on that project, and that is coming from the Revenue Stabilization Fund. We also see the Queens Lake expansion here, beginning in FY '24, as we're seeing some issues there, combined with the highest potential for growth. But we will continue to monitor that. We also noticed $1.1 million there in cash being used here from monies proffered to the county from previous developments. And they're restricted in the uses, and the Queens Lake expansion meets the restrictions on those funds. So those will be coming from the county. You also see the locker room renovations, starting in FY '24, that have been pushed back year after year, but we all know are sorely needed. And we move on to high schools. Now, with high school projects, York High School, you see the finalization of the roof project. And again, Mr. Shearheart's going to give you an update on where we're at with that project as that moves along and looks good. We do have issues with the Bruton High School roof, and that is showing more wear than we anticipated. And so we need to move that up and start to look at a replacement there. And you also see the infusion of $520,000 in cash, and that's coming from last year's end of year, correct?
Yes.
So that's cash that's going to be available for us to use. The TAB High School renovation is kicking off in FY '24, and will also include renovations and a Learning Commons. And all the locker rooms and some restrooms at the high school level, just like in middle school, that have been pushed back in the past are listed during this six-year span. And then we have some other projects that don't fit in a neat designation. We continue to support our modular classrooms. That is what we can use to help give us a little more time as we watch enrollments and see if that's a direction that we want to go as far as expansions. And so we've reduced the money there because it's offset somewhat by being able to reduce computer labs. We've also placed the last two, actually, the last security vest reveal, and there's one that we need to remodel. It also will be time soon to replace our 800-megahertz radios. And we also need to replace some aging PA systems in seven of our schools. We've also placed funds in the plan for a preschool center and a new elementary school, but we keep pushing those out to the out-years because we have committed to renovations beforehand. But we do want to keep having them on the plan so that we don't lose them completely. We also see totals below, which use more cash from a variety of sources, but a general rise in need from the county across the six-year plan. In addition, the county has made available to us $3 million in federal funds to be used across the division that would primarily enhance athletic venues. Those are projects that we tend not to be able to get to as other projects rise to the top. And since we share a lot of facilities with the county, this is a win-win for both of us. We collected a list from our principals, and here are the projects with brief descriptions that we will start pursuing this year and complete over a three-year period. And as you can see, there's some situations where Bethel Manor, Coventry, and Dare, where we're affecting, just moving some earth around, making sure that we have improved drainage. Grafton-Bethel is in line for a new gym floor. That will be the resilient flooring, not the full wood, but, you know, composite that we use that holds up well, but is not to the level of a wood floor, but certainly meets the needs for elementary gyms. McGruder is just some wall pads and some basketball goals. Mount Vernon has basketball backboards and rims in the gym that need replacing. And a project that we really want to get done is TAB Elementary fixing the playground drainage there.
That's an issue.
To complete the list, Yorktown Elementary needs to replace some wall pads and add storage and shades to those windows that are up high in their gym. The Grafton complex also is going to replace that poured floor that they have in there with a resilient floor in that auxiliary gym and have wall mats. Queens Lake is due for a wood gym floor, just as we did at Yorktown Middle and at TAB Middle this summer. Bruton High has a number of projects that we want to do, repainting their gym lines that have been there a long time, and some different plumbing and drainage projects out near the baseball and softball fields. And then the big item there is we have some serious drainage issues out at the pit, and we want to address those, and then also add a turf field on top of that. TAB High School has a weight room that is very dated, and so they'd like to modernize that, and we need to fix some soccer field fencing. And at York High, we have some doors to the training room that need replacing, the motors that move their basketball standards up and down, and then the field hockey scoreboard they've asked to be replaced. So that is the end of my report. I welcome any questions.
Dr. Carroll, before you accept questions, can you share a little bit with the board about the process that you've worked with the county and as far as our work with Mr. Morgan and the CIP committee?
Well, annually, we meet with their CIP committee. They allow input on their projects, and they give us input on ours. However, we're treated differently, but that's something that we go through every year. And with this ARPA funding, we've had ongoing discussions with Mr. Morgan and his staff about what would be the best uses. And then, as I said, we put this out to the principals. We directed them towards the athletic venues, but after that, then it was the projects that they suggested and brought to us. And...
They gave us an extensive list.
Yes, they did. And we compared that to also some things that we were seeing and came up with a recommended list. And we feel like it hits everybody. If there's some schools missing there, they recently had renovations to their gyms or to their building.
Or Seaford is going to get a renovation.
Or Seaford's about to, right. So this is in addition.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
So just a comment before my question. The ARPA funds, I'm glad to see that TAB Elementary school, the drainage. I mean, all these projects are definitely needed, even lighting at some of our fields. We can sweep that in wherever, whenever we can. But I know we've done some security vest reveals at most, if not almost all of our schools now, or at least the planning stages are there. Is there talk about doing a similar project, maybe at the school board office? Once an individual comes in from outside and gets into the library area, there's really open access to the rest of the building. You know, you have a lot of sensitive information in the financial area. You have sensitive information from students and different areas of that building. Just curious if we've had some discussions on it.
Yes, we have a committee that started to talk about what that would look like. And then we'll evaluate what kind of costs would be involved, and then we would have to work it out. And it might be something we'd be able to do with end-of-year funds. We'll just have to see.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And would you happen to have a timeline, possible?
That's in full, it is in the full report. I forget which page, but it's there before the CIP date.
Could you just remind me of the steps, like going back and looking at the enrollment and capacity projections? Like, if you just look at it and you see if you don't make any changes in the next six years, Coventry Elementary, for example, would be 370, you know, over the capacity as it is. So can you remind me of the steps that we take when we are over capacity to find that room and space for the students in the buildings?
Right. So the first thing is you look for available space that's in the benefit. Do you mean how we handle that from the division level?
Yes.
So the first thing is that we look for temporary fixes. Either it's something we can do with enrollment that would be in the building, or we could look at redistricting, that's one option. Then you have the temporary modules that usually buy you a lot of space there and can buy you time. Then the next step is adding additions. So that's why you see additions and expansions to the buildings you've got in there. Seaford's first, Dare's in there, Waller Mill's there, Queens Lake is there. Now, those are all the projects that we can even consider. Everything else is landlocked. And so unless you were going to get really drastic and have to, you know, raise a building down and then build something two stories, I mean, that's what it would take in order to get more capacity at those buildings. You also have an agreement with the county that you want to keep your elementaries around 700. So that's also a commitment we've made in the past. And then only after all those are exhausted, then we talk about building a new school.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
All right. And our last item on our agenda is a capital project report. Dr. Shandor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. And our final report is going to be from our Associate Director of Capital Plans and Project, Mr. Mark Shearheart, who is sporting his Dallas Cowboy tie, even though they didn't look really good yesterday. Mr. Shearheart?
You're welcome for that introduction. I'm wearing the tie for moral support. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your capital project report for the month of November. I've got three projects to go review, and the first of these is Bruton High School, the Learning Commons, and the restrooms there for the School of the Arts. So this project is 98% complete. We have received a certificate of occupancy for all... We have received a certificate of occupancy for all areas there. And the contractors are finishing up some minor details, some touch-up paintings, some caulking, and things like that that were pointed out with the architect's punch list. We have received two furniture shipments. Unfortunately, we're still waiting on some furniture, which is going to delay the grand opening, which had been planned for tomorrow evening. We'll now point out those areas where that's missing in a couple of pictures here. So this is a picture of the classroom there at the Learning Commons. You can see the stage seating in there. You can see the seating up in front now. So we're missing a podium. We just got a little table sitting there right now. And there's also a corderza, corderza. Corderzas along this wall here that are missing. There's also an 80-inch monitor that's missing on the wall there, which we know is on a ship off the coast of California. So we do know where that's at. We're waiting on the furniture. The furniture supplier told us, oops, it's going to be another month before they ship it out. So hopefully, it's not going to be that long. And this is just another picture of the same room to show you how empty it is. This is a picture from the front door of the Learning Commons. Looking into it toward the back, you can see on the right-hand side, there's again the collaboration spaces. You can see they've been very busy loading the bookcases. They've got them just about all done. They're working on the last one. You see that's still empty over there. But up in the front here, on the left-hand side, there's some furniture supposed to be there, and it's just not arrived yet. So that's some of the furniture we're waiting on.
Mr. Shearhart, can you share what the area, I'm sorry, you can go back to that one picture, the one before?
There you go.
This one. So in that space, is that going to be a space for students to use? Or a, I thought there was like a circular area for students?
Right, that circular seating area is right on the left-hand side.
For collaboration space.
Right, and they got the floor box there. But also in each of the collaboration spaces here on the side with the glass doors is that, there's a U-shaped table in there, and it was six chairs around it, six stools around it. And then they have a monitor on the wall, and they can get in there and work in each of those spaces there. So there are four spaces at Bruton High School. I think we only have three at York High School. York High School, one of the things they told us was they wish they had an additional one. So we added a fourth one at Bruton High School. And then this is a picture from the back door looking to the front door there, in the far, the front door of the Learning Commons there. But you see right here in the center, there's kind of a conglomeration of chairs just sitting there, or stools. And that's because we don't have any of the tables for the computers to sit on, for the students to be able to do their research. So we're missing all those tables there. There's another table for check-in on the right-hand side that's missing. So we are definitely missing some furniture there that's going to add a more completed look to that Learning Commons. And we have York High School, the roof repairing coating there. And although this project has been hindered by material delays throughout the entire start of the project, the contractor has made fantastic progress, in my estimation, with the available materials they've had. They've kept at it, they've kept at it, and kept working. And they found pieces of material here, there, and everywhere to keep pushing forward on this project. So this was a planned two-year project. So they are planning to come back next year. They will be demobilizing in about the next three weeks here, and that's because of the weather. There's a lot of dew in the morning. It takes them about an hour and a half, two hours just to blow the dew off the roof so they can work. And then their plan is to return in May to continue working the roof. So here's a picture of the math and art wing. At the far roof there is the art wing. And you see here this is the math wing in the floor ground. And you can see several areas there where they've removed old air conditioning equipment curbs and patched the roof. So that's what it's going to look like to make the water run off the roof better. So it's also obviously a lot more energy efficient since it's white. And this is the roof of the Learning Commons. Also, we had some old equipment curbs up there we removed off that roof too, and now they've repaired and coated that. So this is an overall view of the roof of York High School. Down, the front of the building is at the bottom of the slide. And so you can see there's A to Z roofs on this building. So there's 26 roofs, literally 26 roofs on this building. Actually, there's more than that. All the ones that say N I. C. are not in the contract. They're metal roofs or something like that that's not included in this contract. But you can see everything in blue is what they've achieved or will have achieved within a couple of weeks. So they've got a lot done with the little material they've had available. They've got a lot done. Very impressed with that contractor. This is Seaford Elementary School. This is the last project for this evening. This project did go out for bids on October 26th. We had a pre-bid meeting on November 3rd. We had at least 30 contractors in there. It was amazing. We had so many people in there. So there's a lot of interest in this project. Hopefully, that gives us some good bids too, a lot of competition, I hope. And then the bids are due December 2nd. The classroom addition, we expect to start here shortly after the school year. They've got, shortly after the new year, they need to drill holes in the ground for the geothermal wells and things like that. They can get some of that project started early in the year, and then they'll start laying the foundations there for the new addition. We expect that new addition to be completed and occupied May of 2023. So they have a long time to get there, but you know, but because of all the shortage of materials and workmen, we're giving them an extra long time to get it done in the first phase. And then they'll move into the building and start doing renovations inside the building. And those renovations, we anticipate being done August of 2023. And then the bus loop and vehicle park and a lot of expansions will take place summer 2023 as well. This is a slide from the architect's pre-bid meeting. And I don't expect you to be able to see what's up there, but you see all the different colors. They all represent different phases of the project. They have different timelines, start timelines, to end timelines. So it's going to be a dance with the contractor to work around the students in the building. So as portions are built and finished out, students are going to have to be moved. And then they can start working in a different area. The offices will have to be moved from their current location to another area. So there is going to be a dance taking place at Seaford over the next couple of years. But it's going to look fantastic. It's going to be well worth it. It's going to be a fantastic-looking school when it get done. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you all have any questions for me?
Are you, you want to wait until all the furniture has arrived at Bruton for the Learning Commons to open it? Or is there a certain threshold you want to meet in order to open it?
She's going to, the principal is going to work on opening it as soon as we can. And then I think, what is it, let's call it 45th anniversary of the school?
The school is, and it's 45th anniversary year. So yes, she is working to begin using the space. We don't want to hold up the use of the space for us to celebrate. So we're looking to maybe do something more combined at the end of the first semester where we can...
The students can teach us and show us how they're using their space. So we want to get them in there as soon as we can.
Great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Shearhart.
Just a side comment, the SOA bathrooms.
I toured there today, and it is such a change from the way they had been for the last however many years.
Forty-five years.
Yeah. And it looked really, really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shearhart, for giving us that update on the ongoing projects. That was our final topic on the agenda for that. As always, the board recognizes and appreciates all the work that was involved in order to keep us updated. And our work session is now adjourned. And now I will call to order our November 8, 2021, special meeting of the York County School Board, where we have a consideration of approval of updates to the C I. P. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and board members. We have Mr. Bowen here this evening, and he is going to share one piece of business that we need your support on. So it's the item related to, is it Mount Vernon, Mr. Bowen?
I have two projects.
Two projects, I'm sorry. So I'll let Mr. Bowen pull up his presentation.
Good. All right.
Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, thank you for this opportunity to present this information to you this evening. So this evening, the staff is proposing a revision to the FY '22 Capital Improvements Program, which will require your action. On October 1st, Y C. S. D. received notification from the Department of Education of a $2.53 million federal award. The coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds were awarded to support qualifying ventilation and replacement and improvement projects in public school facilities. Couple of specifics I want to point out about this grant. The application, first of all, is due next Monday, November 15th. They gave us about 45 days to work on this, and a lot of the work was done as Dr. Carroll, Mr. Shearhart were preparing the facilities master plan. Also, all the costs related to this project and a matching project have to be incurred by December 31st, 2024. So we have three years to do it. However, as Dr. Carroll mentioned, we're still experiencing issues with the supply chain. So every school division received these funds. Many of our neighbors received a lot more money. So we'll all be competing for materials and supplies and labor. So it's important for us to try and get ahead of the curve if we can and if this is approved tonight. Second, this grant requires 100% match. And this means that if we receive and spend all the $2.5 million, then we have to spend an equal amount from qualifying matching funds and on a qualifying project. Now qualifying matching funds might be our local bonds that the county, the debt service, that largely funds our capital improvements program. Could also be re-appropriated end-of-year dollars, revenue stabilization funds. You know, if we spend revenue stabilization funds, that's something that's separate, that's going to have to be approved by the board and the board supervisors. And then something new specifically to this program that they're allowing us to do is to use federal funds to match federal funds. That's never happened in my 33 years of government work, but we're allowed to use ESER formula funds. And we've received many ESER grants in the past year and a half. We've had ESER 1, 2, and 3 formula funds. We've also had ESER 1, 2, and 3 competitive grants. And those competitive grants are specific programs, like for learning loss. Those funds can't be used, but the programs where they've set aside, and most recently, this was our ESER 3 formula funds. In August, the board approved $5.2 million plan. There were about 16 different programs that we could apply for. If you recall, we had $400,000 set aside in that proposal and what was approved to be used for ventilation projects. So we have $400,000 set aside currently to be used, which could be used to match this grant and other projects. What we anticipate is with ESER 2 formula funds, we received about $2.3 million. Part of, and we're currently in the spend-down on that grant. We had a program for this summer. It was for the robust summer academy that we had, about $900,000, which we had budgeted. We spent a little less than half a million dollars. So the money that we didn't spend can be reprogrammed into another area, another qualifying project, which would be this H V. A. C. project, can match on the H V. A. C. project. So that would be our plan moving forward. The third detail I wanted to bring to your attention is it's a provision in federal grant called the Davis-Bacon Act. And what this provision requires is if you're using funds, federal funds for construction, then it requires all laborers and mechanics under contractors and subcontractors to be paid a prevailing wage, excuse me. The prevailing wage is information that's provided by the Department of Labor and Industry. Generally, what that means is that the wages that we pay our laborers here in Hampton Roads and in many other areas, it's less than what the prevailing wage is. And so when you are required to pay the prevailing wage, it usually means that the cost of the project is going to be higher. In addition, there's a significant administrative component to monitoring and auditing and assuring that those prevailing wages are paid all the way down the chain. So the good news is just spending the coronavirus grant funds. Our project is $2.5 million. It doesn't rise to the threshold of what's required under this particular program. Projects $10 million or more is the threshold. So if we had a project $10 million or more, then Davis Bacon would trigger. Less than $10 million, we don't have to do that. However, if we use ESER funds to match the construction piece, then that triggers Davis Bacon. So we have a workaround on this. Because when you think about construction, trying to think about it in two phases, we have the architectural and engineering phase, and then we have the construction phase. So with A and E services, those are professional services. And you can use those ESER funds to pay for those services, and it doesn't trigger Davis Bacon because those are professional services and they're not covered under Davis Bacon. It's just the construction side. So our goal here is to not use the ESER funds at all for the construction side and just use solely the coronavirus funds and then with the combination of local bonds and debt service, end-of-year funds, and potentially using the revenue stabilization fund. So let me quickly walk you through what the change we're proposing this evening. So this is on the elementary side. As Dr. Carroll presented earlier, we did have a change to Mount Vernon. Initially, this project, this was approved by the board January of 2021. And with the ongoing facilities report that's been conducted and with the advice of some of our architects and engineers, they expected this project is going to be higher than what was originally budgeted. So at $2.5 million. So the plan would be to use our federal funds, a combination of federal funds, I'm sorry. There we go. To use a combination of the federal funds and bond funds and revenue stabilization funds for this project. And then with TAB Middle School, this project was initially proposed in FY '24. However, due to the need to have a qualifying matching project and to spend the funds by the December 31st, 2024 deadline, we need to move this project up. Now, as part of that facilities report, this project initially budgeted $3.3 million was now estimated to be $4.2 million. What we don't know by moving it up two years whether or not we will see that project come in less than the $4.2 million. That will be determined when we go out to bid. So it just involves, so the change is being proposed, and I involve two projects, increases to both projects at Mount Vernon and TAB Middle with the use of those federal funds for those projects. And that's my update this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I have.
So the Seaford Elementary that's in there for $400,000 is also green, but that's not a change?
Green is cash.
That's just using the cash that we have on hand, okay.
I will add, the really good thing about this, and we weren't expecting federal funds for this, but we're adding about $3.3 million of federal funds to our C I. P. And this is going to help us out tremendously because as we've seen, we've talked about, we're seeing increased costs in labor and supplies. And this is much needed cash to help continue the work and keep our schedule, to keep our projects on schedule.
So is the hope then that all school divisions that are getting these same funds, that are we just trying to get ahead of it and get in as fast as we can and get the bids? I mean, is that the ultimate goal?
That's one goal. The reason for presenting this this evening is to move this '24 project for TAB Middle up. We need to do that in order to get that project under the timeframe that we're limited to with the grant.
With the grant, okay.
But if this is approved, then our goal will then be to take this out as quickly as possible to have the A and E work and get the construction on schedule as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? So we're in need of a motion and a second to approve the updates to the C I. P.
Mr. Chair, I move we amend the capital improvements program as presented. Kind of like.
I'll say.
Miss Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson. It's taken by Mr. Schaefer to approve the updates to the C I. P. program.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer? I'm sorry. Mr. Maya?
Yes.
And Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero.
Thank you very much, Miss Ford.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
We are in need of two closed sessions. Could a board member please make a motion and a second to take us into our first closed session, which is regarding personnel matters?
I move the New York County School Board convening closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A, one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
We have a motion and a second, Miss Ford?
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Groll. It's taken by Mr. Richardson. It's a school board's closed session.
It was Mr. Maya.
Is it by Mr. Maya?
Mr. Maya.
Okay, so Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Groll?
Yes.
And Mr. Higginbottom?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero, you're now in closed session.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, our next regular meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, November 22nd, here at York Hall. Have a great evening, everyone.